Councilmember Slotin?
Here.
Councilmember Perdoff?
Here.
Councilmember Kramer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Overton?
Here.
And Mayor Clacke?
Here. Councilmember Kramer? You can leave it simple. Yeah.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you. Let's move on to our first presentation from the City Council regarding development.
For allowing me to share issue that we have and solve.
Sir, could you...
Oh, I'm sorry. Chuck Cassis, I'm the administrator. And what I'm really... So, uh... So, our first, the issue in front of us is that Medicare, uh, renumbered very... And in order to continue to care for the community, we need... And so, looking at various... Do that. Act as possible. Start with act based. Make... Stay. Uh... It's second year, wait. Stating... So we actually think that it does really... For you. And similar for... Big man. Fourteen years, well... And now it's... Nothing...
Can you move the game already?
Okay.
For us get... And... Actually... But we see this be... Feel that if we're not looking forward with... Slupe, it's our sustainability. Ready? That's it. Anyways... We're...
So, so what you're looking at, for say you're talking about taxes, or what you're actually looking for that is... This...
That is correct.
So if you create this district and the money's not... People, it's just...
Yeah.
That's one. Councilmember Perdoff?
If... The tax, something, you're saying, you hospital pay?
We pay.
State and then it comes back to you with...
Dollar?
You're basically doing that's...
If I could do to process really the structure of that. In primary role. So because the hospital... Be... For... Did... The one that... Have this present, yeah. To support. Yeah. Slightly different what that like for... Someone can correct. Got thought?
Perdoff? For clarity, this wouldn't impact the rest of the healthcare district, any of the structure of that.
You mentioned health, um, the way that it works in this district, whether he was free or not. Health provider, you got... You take a medic...
This is purely for the hospital. For our hospital, so I brought up... Class. So it's only possible.
I had a question, but councilman, right? Just follow up, I think you might have... So this, this, uh... District just covered the hospital, not covered your area of experience.
It's, it's for our hospital businesses, which include not... It does include our... Slightly...
Uh, is it possible for, so it includes... Could be supported by state to have other...
Uh, well, the way that it's written, it's only possible...
The way it's written by you guys or by the state?
By the state.
Correct, so... Any other questions from council? All right. We're gonna take a five minute recess here and we will return at seventeen.
Test, test.
Pardon, you're coming back a little bit early? All right, so I think the council has several questions at this point. Hope there's some experts online that will listen to it.
Okay, so we have the other... Zach?
We can't hear anything.
We can hear you now, thank you. You, you can't hear us?
We can hear noises, like general sound, that's it.
Maybe, um, putting the mic closer to you.
Jim, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Chuck.
So, we kind of wanted to did an overview of the process. And there was a question regarding the flow of funds from the match from the federal government to the state. Would you mind going through that for the city council?
Sure, so the, um, once a state basically certifies that they have the money, and essentially that's like, in your mind, sending it to the federal government. Federal government will, will certify that they can spend this money and send the money back to the state that is a federal share. State will then take that money and send it out based on whatever program it received the money for from the federal government. So it's not physical transfer of money, it's all done via paper. But that's the way I would explain it to, I don't fully understand them. That's how I'd explain it, is that they do it via paper.
All right, any other questions from council? And so for us, you would need a, a letter of resolution?
When, when we get approval from the board supervisors, we'll come back and ask for that resolution, yes.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for your presentation, thank you both, um, looking forward to supporting you and helping the community.
Absolutely, thank you, and it's very nice to meet you, Simon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number two, the presentation of a proclamation regarding September twenty twenty four senior service. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help their rich and better the lives of younger Americans. And whereas the Hyland Senior Service Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Clear Lake and Lake County. And whereas through a wide array of services, programs, and activities, the... And whereas, through a wide array of services, programs, and activities, the Highland Senior Service Center empowers older adults to contribute to their own health and well-being and the well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas the Highland Senior Service Center affirms the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences and skills and knowledge, enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now, therefore, be a proclining that the Clear Lake City Council does hereby call upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions of Highland Senior Service Center participants and the special efforts of staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older youngs in our community. Signed, September fifth, twenty twenty four. And would the president of Highland Senior Service Center afford to have a.
Uh, no.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you very, thank you very much. And I encourage everyone, once we get back into the senior center, we're gonna have wonderful food and, uh, again, and, uh, games and fun things for our seniors to do. And we're hoping that the, the, our seniors, especially that are alone, will, will encourage neighbors to come and. I wasn't gonna say anything. Uh, first weekend in.
All right. Moving on to improve presentation by the Recreation and Events Division. That's your audience.
Good evening, good evening. Tonight I just wanted to share a presentation regarding, um, what we've done over the summer. We had a pretty good packed summer month, so I just wanted to share some key points. Hold on, where are we difficult? We're just too close. So this summer, we were able to provide activities and events for the community, especially the youth, um, ranging from field trips, concerts, arts and crafts, youth dances, um, zumba and bingo. We changed it. I'm just scrolling. Um, the benefits of summer activities are physical health, respecting of nature, refreshing your mind, creating memories, and increasing creativity. Um, we did two field trips, which were made possible by a generous donation from the Rotary Club of Clear Lake. The first field trip we did was to the, um, Owens Ranch. We brought ten kids, or actually it was thirteen kids, um, and a couple adults, including myself. Um, we did horseback riding, we learned, um, some gardening stuff, we had a bonfire and a, um, smores and hot dogs over there. Here's, here's some more pictures from the field trip. We also did another field trip to, to Tocco Mini Golf. Then next, we did six summer concerts, which was more than we've done in previous years. Um, a couple of the concerts had two months, um, so there were, there was a lot of, uh, variety this summer. So here you'll find some pictures. We also did a youth dance at the youth center, we had about twenty kids there. Um, we also had some parents that got out and danced and had a good time with the kids, so that was kind of, kind of fun. Every Tuesday and Thursday, we have zumba, um, which as you can see is a nice sized class, um. They enjoy it and people are asking for more days a week. Recently, we had the car show, um, I called it the American graffiti car show, we also played, um, the American graffiti movie that night. We also have the soapbox derby workshop, um, we had cars that were purchased by the city and, um, businesses and community members, um, sponsored them. Um, so the kids put them together, we also had, um, Lieutenant Snyder and Sergeant Cook, they came out and helped to build the cars with the kids. Uh, here is not only myself, uh, Robyn Smith is a really, uh, generous with her time and volunteers on almost everything that we do with the, the youth center and the recreation department. And then, uh, we also have Casey Miller and Adam Niermontes who donate their time and work with the kids and anything that we need volunteers for. Now that the summer is over, we have more movies in the park, we're gonna have the Robert Niermontes Memorial Soapbox Derby, which is next weekend, so if anybody needs something to do on Saturday, that's a fun event. Um, we have the circus coming next week, truck retreats coming up pretty fast, and the, uh, Christmas parade before the end of the year. And then if anybody has any questions, comments, or has any input on future ideas or how to make current, um, recreational things better, uh, feel free to give me a contact me and I'd love to hear your input, thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like a prayer.
Yeah, a quick question, yeah, when is the Christmas parade?
It's the first Saturday in December. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next, uh, public comment, this is a time for any member of the public to address the city council on a question that is not on the agenda, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act with limited exceptions does not allow the council staff to discuss items brought forth under public comment. Uh, if you are on Zoom, you can leave a comment in, uh, the chat tool there and our city clerk will read it after we take all the notes here in the chair. So I have a couple that have already been submitted, we'll start with Mark Alia. And we are limited to three minutes for public comment.
That's. I've stated on my request is, okay, if I, uh, ask you some questions to clarify how public comments are made before I start my time? Because once I start my time, you can't answer my questions.
Okay.
Isn't that true?
What are your questions for what public comment process?
Let me get my notes out here. Um, I just, I've got some clarifying questions, um. So I, I don't want to overstep my bounds, there's, I was president one meeting where Mr. Kramer replied to you guys as Mr. and Mrs. as opposed to council. Tom or Chris, girl. Mr. Kramer, um, got kind of upset with a lady saying her comment was rude and disrespectful, okay? Councilwoman Overton, Mrs. Overton, uh, got upset with a lady one time in a meeting and said.
Well, to, to be clear, I think the moments you're talking about are during agenda items, where there can be a back.
I'm not complaining, I'm clarifying.
We didn't know, but I, I think the moments you're talking about were during agenda items, where it can be back and forth.
Oh, they can be back and forth, okay.
This period here before we get to the agenda, we can't really respond.
Okay, got you. Um, so basically I can come up here and say whatever I want, as long as it's polite and respectful.
Correct.
Right, and you can't say stop.
I, I'm, unless you run out of time, I would never do that.
Okay.
I'd rather just stay with everybody.
Okay, um. Then I've heard some comments from people that are crazy, I don't know how you put up with them, you know, some of them don't even make sense. But you let them go. Okay, that's, that takes a lot of patience. Trust, trust me, I, 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 I've like pulled my hair out listening to them, um. Uh, one more thing, would anyone like to read this before?
If you want to hand it to the, the city clerk here, um, she can pass that around, we won't read it before your public comment, but we can.
Well, I just, I, I, the only reason I'm asking is, um, you know, maybe Mr. Kramer wants to make sure that there's nothing rude written in here.
Is, is, are those your notes for a public comment?
No, these are still questions.
Okay.
Okay, um, you know, maybe Mr., um. Lost my spot now. Mr. Burdock makes, just wants to make sure there's no speculative comments in here, would you like to read mine?
Okay, so at this point, that, that doesn't seem like a substantial question of the public comment process, so now.
Okay, so why, why, why do you not want to read?
This, this is a point of order here, out of fairness to the others that are limited to three minutes, um, has this been explained, this is not an opportunity for back and forth, if you'd like to distribute something to the city clerk, it can be passed on a later time, and so I would advise that the three minutes be started.
Okay, so I'd like to start with six minutes right now, and the reason, the reason why I'm saying six minutes is, um, in the August fifteenth, twenty twenty four meeting, there was a, uh, question submitted on Zoom. And that question was submitted by Mr. Aheart, his question was not asked and it was not answered of the public speaker, the guest speaker that you invited here to answer the public's question. Do I get six minutes or do you want me to continue?
You do not, uh, I, I, listen, and that's on me, I apologize if I didn't ask.
Yeah, well, that's on you, all right, okay, here we go. So here, here's, I'm gonna read here, Mr. Aheart's question. So you asked Ms. Madam Clerk here, I got these off of the Zoom meeting, uh, videos, okay? So Mr. Aheart's question was, um, at, let's see here. If the city of Ukiah was not already in the water business, would the current JPA, couldn't understand the next word, the same? For instance, would that, would the knowledge of the savers program have factored in, would there be, uh, faith in the city's ability to run the water district? If the city of Ukiah had not been in the water business already, would the consolidation, consolidating water u- utilities be so willing to join the JPA? Um, these questions, in my opinion, uh, are layman's terms, you know, basically things people could understand. Mr. Claffey, um, said with, with his first statement, Mr. Claffey criticized Mr. Aheart's submitted question. Mr. Claffey states, Mr. Aheart's question has some speculation. I'll try to summarize. Summarizing, summarizing a public comment is like mixing oil and water. They don't mesh, do they? You can't stand here and tell me what I can and cannot say, but you'll summarize a public comment coming in on Zoom? What's that called, censoring? You censored Mr. Aheart's public comment. You stated. Mr. Costner had a good point here too, Ukiah's position as already having water service, did you feel that strengthened the conversation that you had with them? And the other part of your question, well, these are not Mr. Aheart's questions, these are Mr. Claffey's questions in supplement for Mr. Aheart's question. And then you approached when you first, oh, and then your approach when you first started the JPA, was it contentious early on? A contentious, I'm not smarter than a sixth grader, okay? Contentious means argumentative or disagreeable, um. So basically what you did with Mr. Aheart's comment questions for the guest speaker was you dipped it in your oil and discarded it in the trash.
All right, thank you, Congress.
I'm done. Okay, transparency. Transparency is what the city council wants. Oil, their oil does not belong in your water, it doesn't mesh, it flows to the top. That's what their transparency is all about.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Alice Reese.
Good evening, council. My name is Alice Reese. And I'm here in regards to a problem started last and, and the mayor at the time was Mr. Burdock. He is a sergeant police officer, um, Brian Gerson, worked with me, the problem was great. And incident stopped for like nine months, it has restarted. There's, I just can't believe that it hasn't, and it re-upped itself, because they had to get permission from someone. I don't know who that would be, but I can't believe they've closed for nine months and already started. This business remodeled their, started a new business, actually. They are not covered under their conditional use permit to be able to do what they're doing, because they're, they applied for a new ABC license, which states that if there is a residence within one hundred feet of a parking lot or residence, they cannot open what they're given. I have called the police many, many times, my neighbors have called the police. And what I was wondering was if the city manager, whom I presented a petition, signed by the neighbors and neighborhood, ever, and of all the reasons why we were protesting this business, why, did he show that to you? Did you guys know that that was even happening? This business has no, uh, had never filed for any, um, building permits. They changed doors, windows, additions, but, and plus, who knows, like they did on the inside to set up a bar, they have that plumbing and electricity for bars. Their utensils that they use. They don't have a legal parking lot, they're not APA compliant in any manner. To, and, and they make a lot of noise and are, they have a really, what they call disorderly house, people are drunk, smoking pot in the parking lot, making noise, tell, sometimes three o'clock in the morning. Spinning up, racing up and down the street. My neighborhood has had it, and I would really appreciate it if somebody on the council could, because I can't meet with Mr. Wood, the city manager, he's just too much of a bully to me, so, um, and I mean that heartfelt, because I've got many meetings with him, and it's been, he's been very condescending and outright bullying, and I'm not gonna put up with that, so I'd really like to hear from the council member, set up a meeting with myself and my neighbors and find out because this has got to stop. It's not, there's no compromise with us, it has to stop.
Thank you. Follow up. My way.
My complaint's also about the bar. My neighbor to the north is fifty feet from the bar. My house is a hundred and seventy feet south of there. Now, on, uh, August seventeenth, eighteen, there was loud music going on. That's Friday, Saturday. And on Friday, it sounded like there was a fight going on out in the parking lot. Didn't call, but wasn't gonna let it bother me. Now, on August twenty-fourth, twenty-five, more loud music. My wife called and complained and, and officer showed up and I don't know what he did, but didn't help. However, my wife has cancer. I have high blood pressure. And we've got two little kids that were staying over on the weekend that woke up by this loud noise. Now, this last weekend, I could barely hear the noise, which is fine with me. As long as I had the fan on, I didn't hear it. That's, that's my complaint. And he asks how I measured the distances. I have a measuring wheel, same type of CHP and PD uses for accident investigations. So I'm pretty confident those measurements are accurate.
Any questions? Uh, the only question I have is are you connected with Ms. Reese?
Yeah, she's my, she's my neighbor across the street.
Okay, so we'll follow up with you, Ms. Reese, since I have your contact information here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is it for submitted comments. If anyone here in the chamber would like to make a public comment, please come forward. Seeing none, I will move to Zoom. Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and we'll bring back and close public comment. Thank you all. Moving on to item G, the consent agenda. Uh, does any council member want to pull an incentive agenda? Any member of the public? Madam Clerk, anyone on Zoom?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I'm very glad.
All second.
A motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Councilmember Suton. Please vote in your favor.
Motion passes again as vote of the council.
All right, it's Madam Clerk. Moving on to item eight, a presentation and discussion relating, regarding setting water rates. City members, floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. So, as you know, we've been having a number of ongoing discussions about water-related issues in the city. And, um, so we've asked Mark Hill, the brand, to come and give a presentation to the council about, um, sort of rate setting or water rates. So Mark Hill, the brand, is a financial management consultant with eighteen years' experience in helping local governments under our way to see special districts and private companies, bridge funding gaps and find strategic solutions to their business needs. Uh, Mark has a master's degree from UC Berkeley and the University of Bordeaux. A master's degree from the Burn School of UC Santa Barbara. Uh, and spent two and a half years serving as a Peace Corps volunteer in Madagascar. But, um, he's a, an expert in, um, water rate settings. We thought it might be helpful for the council for him to come and, um, give a presentation about this process. And then, of course, you have Mr. Roscoe here, um, that asked to provide some additional follow-up related to, um, infrastructure funding for development and, um, some additional water rate comparison. So I'd like to turn it over, um, to Mark, who is sitting.
Great, thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, welcome.
Great, thank you for having me. Um, again, uh, by way of introduction, a little bit more, I, I do have about twenty years of experience as a rate consultant, primarily in California, but I've worked all across the, um, the states. Uh, my current clients include the city of Santa Rosa, Catatti, Windsor. Um, I've worked with Cloverdale, I'm working with, um, a number of other cities, uh, up and down the one-on-one corridor. And I'm, so I'm pretty familiar with the region. Um, I am going to go ahead and share my screen here. I have a PowerPoint presentation. You see that okay?
Yeah.
Great. Okay. So, um, as far as the agenda, I was just going to give a little bit of backgrounds on rate setting, uh, legal requirements, uh, which, uh, go into rate setting, uh, the financial planning process, cost of service rate design. Uh, and then I was also gonna talk about capacity charges, which are the charges that are assessed to developers when they join the system. So there's also, there's a separate set of legal requirements for those types of charges. Um, and I was gonna talk a little bit about some of the typical methodologies. Um, so there, I, I am, I have been briefed on the, the current situation faced, uh, that the city of Clear Lake is facing in terms of the different water purveyors that are in the region and the idea that, um, some sort of regionalization model is being assessed. And, uh, so this rate analysis would be done within the context of understanding how your rates would be affected by consolidating with one or more of the different water purveyors in the region. Um, this provides a little bit more data in terms of who those water providers are in the region. Um, and you have a various number of connections and populations, all kind of in the same general size. So we're not talking about any massive utilities swallowing, you know, tiny utilities are all kind of, um, by most standards, uh, on the smaller size for water utilities. So the, the legal requirements for setting water rates in California are set by what's commonly known as Proposition Two Eighteen. Uh, it's part of the California Constitution. And there's two major components. If you, if you break it down, there's two major components to the, um, the law. The first one is called, is, is referred to as the substantive requirements. Uh, in other words, you know, how do you set the rates? And that really is based on the idea of proportionality. Uh, you can't charge more than the cost of providing service. So in other words, you, a profit can't be made. Um, you, you can charge enough to maintain adequate reserves and to meet financial requirements, but you can't charge more than the cost of providing service and say transferring it to the rec department or something like that. You have, it has to stay within the water utility. Um, and then the proportionality component is making sure that the different types of customers are paying their fair share. So you can't, um, purposely try to charge more to, say, residential customers in order to keep business costs down. Everybody needs to pay their fair share and that needs to be demonstrated in a clear and transparent way. So it's pretty simple concepts, um, and, and, uh, pretty easy to, to demonstrate in a, in a report. The, the other component is the procedural component, uh, which is just a noticing period. So you have to give notice to your rate payers that you're proposing to change the rates. Uh, you have to send out a notification to all of your property owners who receive water service. And they have to be given forty-five days' notice before you hold the public hearing, um, during which you, time you plan on making the decision. And they are given the opportunity to protest against the proposed rates. And if more than fifty percent of your property owners come out and voluntarily protest against it, then the council is not legally allowed to increase the rates. Um, that essentially nullifies the, the motion. Um, but fifty percent do need to come out and protest against the rates, uh, in writing. So that's, that's Proposition Two Eighteen in, in a nutshell. Um, when we jump into the actual rate setting process, there's, there's three main steps, uh, and they're captured here on the slide. Revenue requirements, which is basically a financial plan, um, cost of service and then rate design. So when we're talking about revenue requirements, what we are talking about is looking at all of the existing revenue that's coming into the water utility. Um, and then all the expenses. And expenses come in different forms. There's operating expenses, uh, such as administration, labor, maintenance, et cetera. Um, there's debt service. So if the utility has any debt, they have to pay their debt. And then there's, uh, capital spending, uh, which pays for any future capital expenses. So those are the three major components of, um, expenses. And when we do the revenue requirements, we look at those expenses and what they're gonna look like over the next five to ten years. And, uh, apply inflationary assumptions to what those costs are. And we back into, okay, well then, if those are your expenses for the next ten years, what, how much rate revenue do you need to recover from your customers? How much? You know, I mean, in most cases, you have to raise rates in order to be able to at least keep up with inflation. Uh, so that's the revenue requirement step. Once you understand how much rate revenue you're gonna recover from your customers or you need to recover from your customers, then you do the cost of service analysis. And that's that part of Proposition Two Eighteen that I mentioned, that makes sure that you're allocating, uh, the fair amount of cost to the different types of customers. So customers drive the utility's costs depending on the size of their meter, uh, how many of those types of customers exist and how much water they're using. Um, and so based on different ways of evaluating those costs of the, you know, the cost of the infrastructure, the cost of water supply, we allocate costs equitably to the different customer classes based on those characteristics. And then the final step is rate design, uh, which is essentially what the bill is gonna look like when the customers receive their bill. So how much are you going to recover through the fixed portion of the bill? Which is the part of the bill that doesn't change. Uh, usually it, it depends on the size of their meter. Um, and how much are you gonna recover through the variable portion of the bill, which varies depending on how much water they're using? So those, those are the three principal steps of rate setting. So these are just graphics, just to give you a sense of, this is from a different project, um, just an example. Uh, but if you do do a rate study, you'll, you'll see something like this, which is a snapshot of, okay, here are the different types of revenues that we currently recover. And, uh, usually it's predominantly rate revenue that you get from your customers. Sometimes, uh, there can be grants, uh, or capacity charges from developers or, uh, you sell a different type of water, such as wholesale water. Um, and then on the expense side, uh, there's a variety of different categories for expenses. Um, this doesn't include capital expenses in this pie chart, but it's the operating costs and the debt service. And so it would break down the different components here. And so we would look at these different components, uh, as I mentioned before, over a ten-year period to understand, uh, where we think those costs are going. Um, the capital spending forecast is one of the, uh, more challenging elements of the financial plan. Um, because it, it is, it is the part of the financial plan that has the most amount of decision-making, uh, variability. Uh, capital spending is something that you can ramp up or ramp down depending on the sufficiency of, of revenue and of money. Um, sometimes you simply don't have the money. And, um, capital spending is that category of spending that is on the margins. So in other words, uh, when you run out of money, capital spending is, is usually the first thing that you have to cut back on. And, um, most utilities in the United States in this day and age are looking at aging infrastructure. Uh, they're looking at capital expenses that exceed their ability to pay. And so a lot of the exercise of the financial plan is looking at, okay, how much money do we have to reinvest in the infrastructure in order to make sure that we keep up with depreciation and that we keep up, uh, with the, um, the infrastructure as it, as it starts to, to age and, and make sure that it doesn't fail. Uh, because replacing infrastructure after it's failed is significantly more expensive than replacing it before it fails. And so it really is important to try to have a proactive capital spending plan that stays ahead of the, uh, depreciation of the assets. On another note, there's, there's the reserve targets. This is a bit of a, a nuance, but, uh, there is a certain amount of cash that you will want to keep in your coffers, uh, rainy day funds, so to speak. And there's different categories for reserves. There's operating reserves to make sure that you always can cover your operating costs. Emergency reserves in case, uh, some part of your system fails catastrophically. Um, capital reserves to try to smooth out the volatility of your capital spending. Um, and then the rate restabilization reserve helps you make sure, make sure that you can pay for your debt. So you don't have to have all four of these reserves. Sometimes, you know, one, one or two reserve policies can be sufficient. I've worked with clients that have had upwards of eight different reserve policies. So, um, it's not a one-size-fits-all in terms of these policies. But you do want to make sure that you have some form of a reserve policy, uh, because it is really important for your credit rating. Uh, the credit agencies look at different things. And one of the things they do want to see is that there's a formal policy to ensure that there's always enough, um, rainy day money in your coffers for, uh, unforeseen incidents. And that really helps your credit rating, which in turn allows you to qualify for a less expensive debt. Uh, this, this graph's a little bit more involved, but it takes all of the different pieces that I just talked about and puts them together. Again, this is just an example. These are not numbers that, you don't focus on the numbers on the act, on the X-axis here. Um, but it's what, the top graph is basically comparing future revenues to future expenses. So the revenues here, um, the light green would represent the existing revenue. Um, and the dark green would, uh, represent the additional revenue that you get from the rate increases that are shown at the bottom of the graph here. And this middle line graph, uh, shows the reserve targets and the projected fund balance. So you wanna try to keep that projected fund balance, uh, aligned with your reserve targets. And so this is the, the final product coming down to that financial plan, showing that you have a plan for capital spending and that you've projected expenses to go a certain way and, and that you've calculated the amount of rate revenue that you need going forward. When we, uh, switch over to cost of service and rate design, um, there are a number of steps. Uh, I'm not going to go through these in detail. Uh, but the, the, the ideas, I already covered it a bit in the beginning. But you start by identifying your total rate revenue, um, requirements. And then we allocate the different costs of the utility to different functions. So you know, you have a certain amount of cost applied to your supply versus water treatment, versus transmission, versus administration, et cetera. And, um, once you put those into those different buckets, you're able to calculate unit costs so that you can, uh, allocate, okay, this is how much it costs to serve each account. And this is how much it's our cost to serve different types of meter sizes. And this is how much it costs to send a gallon of water. Um, and, um, then we allocate those costs to the different user classes depending on how many counts there are and how many meters, the size of the meters and how much water they use. There are different types of rate structures. Um, and when we talk about rate structure, we're probably, we're talking about primarily the, um, the variable component. Um, so the most common rates in California currently are either uh, uniform rates, which are, um, essentially every gallon of water costs the same. So, uh, usually it's measured in, in HCF, uh, or hundreds of cubic feet. And, and so there's a certain number of units. And if you have a uniform rate, then your first HCF costs, say, three dollars and your last HCF also costs three dollars. It doesn't change regardless of how much water you use. Um, if you have tiered rates, then you get a certain amount of water at, say, two dollars, um, per HCF. And then after you exceed a certain threshold, then you'll be paying four dollars. And the idea of tiered rates is to, um, try to give the benefit of your cheapest source of water to your customers before you charge them for your more expensive source of water. Um, that provides a mechanism for both promoting conservation and, um, promoting affordability. Now, you, you can't, you can't design your rates for the sole purpose of encouraging conservation. Um, you can't say, well, we want to cut back on water usage, so we're gonna increase our rates or we're gonna have tiered rates. Uh, or we want to make our rates affordable, so we're gonna design them a certain way. Um, but if you can find a cost-based method, um, then you can make decisions about how you design your rates in the interest of achieving those goals. Um, so again, tiered rates, uh, would be a cost-based, uh, a cost-based method where you would calculate the cost of your cheapest water and sell that cheapest water at tier-one rates. And then you would put your more expensive water at tier-two, and that would achieve the objectives of both affordability and conservation. Um, seasonal rates are falling out of fashion, but you know, some, sometimes utilities have very different, uh, co, they have, their costs change depending on the seasons. And so you can have seasonal rates. And then budget-based tier, budget-based tier rates are basically really. And then budget based here, budget based tier rates are basically really complicated tier rates where. The amount of water that you receive at the different tiers is. Calculated based on the very specific. Characteristics of each account. So for example. Single family homes, you would actually look at, say, how many people live in the home and the size of the yard and all these different things in order to determine. How much water you get in tier one versus tier two versus tier three. Normally I would pause here, but I I'm just gonna go ahead and finish the presentation and I can always back up and and take questions if you'd like. So in terms of capacity charges, we I mentioned that capacity charges, they have different pseudonyms. They can be called capital facility charges or developer impact fees or connection fees. These are all different ways of talking about the fee that is paid by. Developers or even just, you know, an individual when a new. Account joins the system. And the idea of the capacity charge. Is it's like joining a club, right? You're you're paying for all of the. Investment that went into the existence of the infrastructure up until that point. There's a there's a lot of value to being able to. Jump in and and immediately be served by existing infrastructure. So. The idea of a capacity charge is to to pay for all the costs that had previously been invested in the system. And then your rates going forward is the cost to continue to run and maintain and replace that system. So the legal standard for how you. Set capacity charges is part of the government, California Government Code. It's sixty six thousand in sequence and. The standards are a little bit different than what I mentioned in Prop two eighteen. In this case, it just needs to be based on estimated reasonable cost of providing service. There's two different approaches that are common for capacity fees. You can either do the buying approach. Or you can do the incremental approach. The buying approach. Is. A bit like buying a used car. You're you're essentially saying. You know, we have an existing system. We have plenty of room for new people to join. So we're gonna charge you for what it cost us up up until now. To to join the system. And oh, by the way, a lot of the stuff that we put in. We built it thirty, twenty, thirty years ago and it's aging. And so the cost, the buying approach ends up being a bit cheaper. Because it does account for the depreciation of the infrastructure, the developers joining, you know, joining the system that has. Depreciation. Built into it. And so the fee ends up being a bit lower and it's based on the value of the existing system. The incremental cost approach is appropriate when a system is completely built out. And there's no more room. You you in order to serve new development, you need to build more pipes. You need to make the pipes bigger. You need to add more treatment processes or more infrastructure. And so that fee is gonna be based on the cost of building more infrastructure, which is going to be brand new infrastructure and therefore that cost ends up being. A bit more expensive. So the right answer depends on the system and the situation that you find yourself in. Do you have enough room to? Accommodate new development or are you at capacity? A lot of utilities actually use a hybrid because the answer is sort of a mix, you know, well, we have enough. Capacity in the pipelines, for example, but our treatment is that capacity. And so you do a hybrid of these two different approaches. And my last slide here is a very specific slide. But it was a a topic that I understand may the city may be facing. It's an interesting concept that takes a second to wrap your head around. But the question is, when you do need to take an existing, say you need to. Replace an existing six inch pipe with an eight inch pipe. If you were to, if that replacement were to be done just before. Because that pipe was old and needed to be replaced simply because it was about to fail. And you replace the six inch pipe with a six inch pipe. Then that cost would need to be paid for by your rate payers because that's simply a a maintenance expense of maintaining. The existing infrastructure and it's not increasing the capacity of the system. And so a hundred percent of those costs would be recovered through your rates. On the other hand, if you had a six inch pipe. That needed to be, that was only a couple of years old, but now you have to replace it with an eight inch pipe because it's a new development. And there's not enough capacity. And so you need to go in there prematurely and replace that. Six eight, that brand new six inch pipe with an eight inch pipe. Well, then that cost should be borne entirely by the developers. It shouldn't be paid. Or by rate payers because they already paid for the 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 six inch pipe. There's no reason to pay it and you know, charge them twice. And then, as you can imagine, what I'm getting at here is that there's a bunch of gray area between. What if that pipe is expected to have? Forty years of life and it's at, say, thirty five years, so it's not ready to be replaced yet. But now you're replacing it a little bit early because there is a development. And so there's different methodologies and different rationale for how you allocate the costs. Between rate payers versus developers when you do have infrastructure that needs to be. Replaced, you know, when the infrastructure does have some depreciation associated with it. But also needs to be replaced perhaps a bit earlier than than. Strictly needed in order to accommodate growth. So there's this proportionate method, which basically. Proportions the cost based on the proportionate amount of capacity that is split. Between the different, between existing users and future users. And then there's the incremental method where you're allocating. Incremental costs to the different parties, whether. The you know, what's the incremental cost of increasing, of upsizing the the pipe had you, you know? If you had only put in the six inch pipe, what's the difference in the cost of the project for a six inch pipe versus an eight inch pipe? So there's there's a lot of nuance to this. I don't think that it's a topic that we want to get into too much detail. It's. It's good for a healthy conversation, but there are standards out there and there's different ways to allocate these costs that we would. We could talk about in more detail when the time comes. And that's the end of my presentation. I hope I didn't cover that too quickly and I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
That was great. Thank you so much. Any questions from council?
My only, my only question is, can we get a copy of that presentation? To look at the various charts.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I I'm not sure if I sent the latest version. I'm happy to to send it out.
It was a great presentation and answered a lot of. Questions I asked. Thank you.
Great.
You talk about the incremental cost to be borne by new development. Sorry, the incremental for new development, you said we have to use more, most likely the incremental cost. Analysis. But what what is the situation? If you have. We have in this this city, a lot of lots that are, you know, empty and there were water lines put in thirty, fifty, eighty years ago. And now we have a lot in the subdivision from the thirties, fifties, eighties. Is that incremental cost of providing significant improvements for fire flow and those kind of issues? Whose cost is that?
I'm sorry, could you explain the what's the scenario? So you're you're talking about vacant lots that haven't been developed, but are connected to the system?
Yes.
And.
The the existing lines in there are not capable to provide enough water or fire flow. To an existing subdivision that a lot of lots were not developed, but now they are.
Got you. And I'm assuming that those lots never paid. Capacity charges back in the day, they they remain unsold and or or at least they hadn't paid, they haven't paid capacity charges until now?
I I don't know though.
Okay. So so if they paid capacity charges back in the day, you can't charge them again. So you'd have to look back in your records to see if they already. Paid, because whenever they paid back at the, you know, at that time. Was apparently appropriate for what the cost of connecting them at the time. Typically, they have not paid the capacity charge yet. They don't, they usually don't. Pay until they actually physically connect to the the lines that cross in front of them. So in that case, it 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 can be quite challenging, right? Because say you're. That one lot that pushes the pipe beyond its capacity, right? You you obviously can't bear the entire cost. Of replacing a one mile pipe. With a larger pipe on your own. That certainly wouldn't be fair. But where does the money come from? And. There's different answers to that. There there can, there there's different ways of financing the cost of the project. To basically the city could finance the project and then. Be repaid over time as development fills in. The city gets reimbursed for the cost of expanding the pipe. To those different for for the benefit of those lots. You can also create assessment districts. Where the the properties. The 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 cost of the expansion comes out of property taxes or off the the property tax bill for the specific properties that benefit from the expansion of the project. So. It's not a one size fits all, but there are different mechanisms for dealing with those situations.
Thank you. That's my question.
Yes. Learned a new term here a few weeks ago, other people's money. Grants. How would they fit in as far as trying to find if you have a grant? Paying for infrastructure updating. That. Doesn't fit into a rate increase. How do you how do you look at that?
Grants are are fantastic to get and I I I don't know. Clear Lake's history in applying for grants, but I know that they there are some out there. That I'm, you know, in particular. Benefit communities like Clear Lake. We take them when we can get them. I usually don't count on them when I'm doing a financial plan and the city says, oh, I'm I'm, we're we're applying for these grants. That may or may not hit. I usually say, let's assume we're not gonna get it because we certainly don't want to set rates. With a with a hope that a grant gets grant or a grant is granted and and then it doesn't come to bear and and now you're you're short. So I'd rather assume that you're not going to get the grant. And then the the thing about. Adopting rates is that you can always decide to. Implement lower rates than what you noticed. So if you say you're gonna do a ten percent rate increase next year, for example. But then it turns out you get the grant. You can always only charge five percent or whatever the appropriate number is, but you can't go up to fifteen percent if it if you didn't provide it in the notification in the Proposition two T notification and. And talk about the higher rate during the public hearing. Then you can never charge a higher rate than what you noticed, but you can always charge a lower rate. So that would be my recommendation is. I would say, let's assume we're not gonna get the grant, adopt the rates you need in that case. And then when the time comes, if you do get the grant, then we can always dial the rates back.
Okay, thank you. That was actually the answer I was hoping.
Question for you. So you're you're aware of the size of our city. You mentioned a couple of different reserve. Buckets. How much should a a city of our size have in reserve if all those systems work in that?
So. I'm not familiar with the size of the the specific size of the the utility. The operating reserve would typically be about four to six months of operating costs. So if your operating budget was, say, you know, two million dollars, then your operating reserve at six months would be a million dollar reserve. Or three months would be half a million dollar reserve. Your infrastructure, you're sorry, your catastrophic reserve. Is usually an engineering assessment based on what part of your system is the most vulnerable. So if you have a pump station, for example, that. You know, what would happen if it fell into a sinkhole? What would you do? You know, how much is that? Kind of sensitive or vulnerable part of your infrastructure? How much would that cost to replace it? In short, in short order and say that that might be a two million dollar reserve along those lines. Your restabilization reserve would depend on how much debt you have. So that is usually one year's worth of debt. So all these things sort of depend on the specifics of the size of your utility. But I would say that at the end of the day, a common reserve level ends up, when you add it all together, it's usually. About the size of your annual operating costs or a bit more. So if it if your operating costs are about two million dollars, then if you add up all your reserves, it can be two to three million dollar reserves.
Great. It's your rate system. So in order to to bring that type of affordability. As I understand it, you need multiple significant sources of water, correct?
That that's certainly the easiest way to do it. That's the easiest nexus to draw. There's other ways to do it, but the ideally. You have multiple sources of water. That makes the math really easy.
And do you know, off the top of your head, how many California cities have a a tiered rate model?
I don't know the specific number, but I would guess that it's probably between. Thirty to fifty percent, maybe closer to fifty percent have tiered rates.
Great. Thank you so much. Can the person for council?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out, if I could. So most of the discussion here is about. How the methodology for calculating the rate, which really doesn't change based on the. Or shouldn't change based on the structure of the utility itself. I do want to point out, Mr. O'Brant. Mentioned Prop two eighteen process, which is the process that the city would be required to go through. For rate setting as utilities. It's the same process that cannot be counted in the water district utilizes. But it is distinct from the rate setting process that's utilized by Golden State Water and Highlands Water. So I just kind of wanted to underline that, as you know. For Golden State, the investor utility, they make an application every three years to the Public Utilities Commission. There's a whole process which is underway right now. And which were appointed that proceeding and they ask the Public Utilities Commission for what they want. There's usually some negotiation and then they. Implement a rate for the next three years. And then Highlands, as a private corporation. Really has a whole different process, which doesn't include public care. I mean, they just raised their rates earlier this year. Which means that they they put a rate increase on the board of directors agenda with no additional notification to the shareholders. The board of directors approves that rate increase. In this year's case, it actually happened literally behind a locked door and then then the rates are increased. So I just wanted to kind of underline to make sure that you understand. The difference between the government structures and the power system. So so high water doesn't have to go by Prop two eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So no other questions? We'll open up to public comment. If you'd like to commit to comment. Please come forward. Yes, sir.
I just had a quick question.
Please talk to the mic if you could. So if you can, we can hear you.
All right. Not really necessary, but I had the same question as Mr. Mr. Kramer. And then if I provide information, can he email to me? Presentation.
Oh, please do. Sure.
Sure.
Yes, thank you. You're right, they probably require you to come up. So thank you. Any other questions here in the chair?
So we're we're gonna have another presentation, right? This this presentation is not quite over. There's there's more. To come.
Well, yeah, Mr. Roscoe is gonna talk a little bit more about rates and have a comparison. Sort of table.
I'll have a way to tell about it.
Okay, thank you. I actually forgive him. So why don't we have Mr. Roscoe come up now and then? Hope to get a question. Yeah, please come on.
Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake. I just had a couple of questions I wrote down, so bear with me. You kind of explained that the expenses come out before the as far as revenue requirements. And I'm assuming those are something that are yearly, that they come up with their expenses for the year because that has a direct. Effect on what the rate, the revenue requirements will will determine how the rates are set. See, I had a couple. Oh, as far as grants, though, I know that the city of Clear Lake. Hasn't been real proactive as far as applying for grants. I know that Lakeport. No, not true. Okay, well. No, not true. Okay, well, I know that Lakeport, you know, brought in a big chunk of like ten million dollars for their grants. I'm just wanting to stress that I think that grants have a big effect too on. The rates, how they're going to end up if you bring in a good amount of grant. I mean, so proactive on that. I don't know how you guys are set for. Applying for grants in the near future, but I'm thinking that you have that in mind.
Well, I I don't think we've applied for any water grants in particular. Can you give a bit of a recap of how much grant funding went back?
How much outside money? Other people. Well, I don't think it was people's money. How about that?
Well, you're asking a lot on the spot here, but um, I mean, just uh, grants in, say, the last five years for. For structure road stuff would be really close to twenty million. I mean, housing related grants have been received by the city. I was just actually going to. Um, announce to the council tonight, we just got word of another twenty one point seven million dollar um, housing related grants. Um, it's. In the last five years, I mean, it's been uh, well over thirty million that we received.
And that's, you're talking road repair?
Roads, housing, a whole number of things.
Yeah, so I I. That that would be the the main point, um, I guess, um. And let me just see, just make sure I get my questions out here. Um, I'm sure that growth obviously is being considered in a big way, um, because. Just as an example, as far as like, I'm not a engineer or a contractor, but. You know, if you're 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 talking about going from a six inch, six inch pipe to a eight inch pipe, right? And and City of Clear Lake plans to grow and wants to grow, um, and I'm just wondering, you know, maybe. Consideration of going to from six inch pipe to a ten inch pipe. I mean, looking ahead for growth and to try to. Deter deter costs and and expenses. That's just another, and let me just check to see if I've got any other questions.
I think Mr. Hillbrand covered that in the capital spending forecast and having a solid vision is important.
Oh, right, right. So I just want to make sure that is.
Last one, if you make it tight?
Sure, sure, sure. Um, you talked about reserves, that's great. Um, oh, I have one unrelated question, uh, actually. I'm curious if the police department has purchased their drone.
Okay, that's still, I'm talking.
Oh, no, I'll talk again to them?
No, not right now.
Was it simply us or no?
Chief, go free then. Not or not. Thank you, thank you.
All right.
We'll we'll follow. I'm sure, I'm sure one of the tenants in the back might have it.
Okay.
All right, any other comments here in the chair? All right, Mr. Ross. Oh, sorry, we'll, uh, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey. I think there's one slide. Just, I wanted to share this information, uh. In July, I presented information on uh, break structures for the three present water purveyors in the city. Of Clear Lake, and this is just additional information on some additional water systems. The, I I use the same metrics, that is, the seven point seven hundred cubic feet. Uh, is typical indoor use for the average use across California is per capita.
Mr. Ross, just ask if we can make that a little bigger for you? We've got people just kind of straining in the water. I've got somebody strange listening right here.
Well, it's it's gonna be hard to see all of it at the same time, but we can.
Zoom and scroll, maybe. Yeah, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Okay, so. The the three columns, the left column is different water purveyors. The three columns are indoor use only for a family of four. And the seven point seven hundred cubic feet is that measure. Uh, that's roughly seven hundred and fifty gallons of water is a hundred cubic feet. Um, but this is not based on how much water is used in Clear Lake. This is based on the state average. Annual use for a person. So assuming four people, that comes to seven point seven. So this is indoor water use only. So this might equate to a typical usage pattern in winter time when there's no outside irrigation. The middle column at twelve and a half is a little closer to a typical average annual use. And the right hand column would be a peak season use where there is some significant outside irrigation. Uh, and so I presented this information for Conacti County Water District, Highlands Mutual Water Company in Golden State. In uh, in July, those numbers haven't changed. Um, I do want to add a footnote on, because I did hear from the. The Northern Caliber manager for Golden State after I presented, apparently he was watching on Zoom, and he said, I didn't mention the fact that they've got. A low income program. And and I didn't, so I should. Golden State has by far the highest rates, but they also are the only one of these that has a special low income program, is allowed under Prop two eighteen. Under, it is you can't use, you can use other revenues to supplement low income if you're a public agency. Things like if you have a cell tower lease on your water property, that leasing income. Might be considered for offsetting rates for low income folks, but it can't be. Your cost of providing water, Prop two eighteen, correct me if I'm mistaken. For an investor on utility going through the Public Utilities Commission, they can set rates different than Prop two eighteen departments and. Many investor on utilities in the state do have a low income rate program. These numbers don't reflect that. I wasn't able to find how to apply for that, and you might need to be a customer to get it. So what I've done since is just look at other Lake County systems, and I just applied the same metrics, seven point seven, twelve and a half, and seventeen point three hundred cubic feet. A lot of these other Lake County systems are are also relatively high. A lot of these Lake County systems also draw water out of Clear Lake. And I mentioned to you earlier, Clear Lake water is incredibly difficult to deal with. It's it's not easy to treat water. And then below that, uh, are some other Mendocino County systems. Uh, we heard a presentation. Uh, from City of Ucat. Uh, and Sean was here at one of your uh, meetings just shortly ago, and so we were able to get. I'd like to thank City Manager Flora for that, uh, some other information on some other. And and most of these are relatively small systems. Some of these are are very small. Uh, Willow County Water District has different rates for different zones in their system. That's not uncommon if you have higher zones that have extra pumping costs. It is. If you live lower on a hill, we don't have to pump the water as far up the hill to you, and so you get a lower rate. People higher on the hill pay a higher rate because there are additional costs to give the water to you. So again, Prop two eighteen is how much does it cost? And that's what you have to recover for it. Um, and so that's why there's a, two different numbers for uh, Willow County Water District in Mendocino County. And I I just gave, there's there's a zone two and a zone three also there in between those two. I just gave the boundaries. Uh, and so I I thought this was, let you compare to see what other districts around are doing. Um, I'd like to thank Mr. Hillbrand for his presentation. I thought it was pretty thorough. I've been through a number of two eighteen processes. Before, and through a number of PUC processes before, and. Um, you know, when two eighteen passed, it was a change world for public agencies on how they set water rates. You know, you know, it's like enterprise, if you're a city owner, it's an enterprise fund. You can't share that money that you collected in moderate rates with. Public services or parks or any of your other city departments. It's it's enterprise money, you gotta account for it that way. And uh, annual audits are required. So I mean, independent outside audit review. Uh, but I'd like to thank Mark for the presentation. Um, I'm hopefully, I'm happy to answer any other questions about it. He's still around.
So just just to be clear, that second section there, those are all pulling from the lake, all those water systems?
I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure Kelseyville uh, pulls entirely from the lake, and I think the City of Lakeport has multiple sources. So they may have a blend of lake water and well water.
Okay, thank you.
About half of those on the list are groundwater.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Ross. Thank you. Um, I will now reopen public comment if someone wants to make a comment. Oh, sorry. No, go ahead.
All right, good.
You moved first, so.
Good evening, council members, uh, members of the audience. Um, so there was a Lake County news article, lakecounties.com was Thursday, uh, fifth. Uh, September, uh, Mayor Claffey uh, states speaking about Highlands Water. Uh, with rates that are on average forty five dollars higher per month than those of Conacti County Water. Um, Conacti County Water District charges a base fee of forty dollars and thirty six cents a month. Our um, cost of water is four dollars per one hundred cubic feet. So that's four or five inches, uh, five eight, eight inch meter. Um, so that is, we charge Conacti County Water District four cents for seven point four eight gallons. All right, so if a customer that uses eight hundred cubic feet, that's six thousand gallons per month, it would be charged seventy two dollars. Highlands Water charges forty one dollars and sixty cents a month base rate for a five inch meter. And the water costs six dollars and fifty cents per one hundred cubic feet, or six point five cents for seven point four eight gallons. A customer of Highlands Water that uses eight hundred cubic feet per month would be charged ninety three dollars and sixty cents, cents. A difference of twenty dollars. So just talking about Conacti County Water District and um, you know, how we're at our rates, how we've come to our rates now. And some of the improvements we've done to our system, I just wanted to read a few things. So I've been with the Water District for thirty six years. When we first started, we were very, um, had very poor facilities and our infrastructure was in very bad shape. In nineteen ninety four, we spent one point six million dollars to create a distribution system. And and we also uh, replaced the two inch water mains we had with six inch and eight inch water mains. In nineteen ninety four, we spent one point four million dollars on treatment plant upgrades, including. New water pumps, new sand filters, new carbon filters, two new clarifiers, ozone system, new electrical motor control system, chemical pumps injection, chemical injection system. Two thousand and one, we spent four point seven million dollars replacing the remaining two inch mains. With six and eight inch distribution system piping. We also added new storage tanks, uh, two new storage tanks. From two thousand and one to two thousand and fifteen, we spent seven hundred thousand dollars replacing water mains and adding hydrants. In two thousand and four, we spent four hundred thousand dollars in automating the treatment plant. And road sites by Addis Keta automated computer system to run the treatment plant. Between two thousand and six and two thousand and nine, we automated the dis- the um. Uh, we automated the distribution system water meters, the three degree meters, and the cost of over four hundred thousand dollars. In two thousand and twenty four, we spent two point six million dollars replacing water mains and adding hydrants. In twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, we doubled our pumping capacity at the wall water pump house. Doubled the treatment plant filtering capacity and pumping capacity and upgraded the electrical and status system. The plant capacity went from eight hundred and sixty four gallons per minute to fifteen hundred gallons per minute. We added five times the clear water storage, going from a hundred thousand gallon tank to a five hundred thousand gallon tank. I just want to, I know my time right now, but I just want to say that Conacti County Water District has done a tremendous job in getting grant funds. Uh, most of these projects we've done are grant funded projects. So even if you uh, do a majority of your projects with grant funds. It doesn't mean that your rates are going to be uh, as low as you want them to be. And one last thing, um, the City of Clear Lake is tied with. The City of Lakeport with the highest tax rate in the county.
Before you leave, Frank?
Yes. Yes.
So over, I I think your first grant was in early two thousands?
Nineteen ninety four, actually. We did assessment district in a grant funded project.
And altogether to to improve and and build upon the infrastructure there at Conacti County Water. Can you give me an idea of what total grant money you you perceive, just ballpark?
Probably about twenty five million dollars over the past thirty five years.
Is there any way you could have done that just by rate increases or or just using the funding from the ratepayers?
Well, I've done, I've probably dealt with it right now, right?
Um, in in your financial planning, um, I'm going to use kind of a strange example, but um. At a previous employment, uh, we would, we would use cars from the carpool. And we would pay so much per mile for every mile we drove those cars, not just for car, for the gas, oil and maintenance. But also projected to replace that car over the life of that that vehicle. Is there something in your methodology, in your financial planning, that you would use um. A similar method for replacing that infrastructure?
So we do depreciation, so we have an depreciation schedule. So each piece of equipment that we approve, just like we're doing this, we're we're, we've done eighteen million dollars. Grant funded project over the past four years. Uh, you will, we will assess. How long the life expectancy of each one of those pieces of equipment uh, is going to last, and then we'll sign the dollar value on that, and then we will. Have a depreciation schedule that basically is a guideline, a plan into a guideline. That that lets you know how long that piece of equipment lasts, how much money you should save if you weren't going to replace it with grant funds.
Perfect. And and that's, that's just what I was looking for. What about the plants? How do you, how do you estimate your your replacement of of equipment in the plants?
Each each piece of equipment is is a sense of value individually, because like, uh, say, a piece of electronic, like a computer, you know, computers don't last very long. That's going to have a very short lifespan, but like a tank, tank will last a very long time, you know, maybe fifty, you could get maybe seventy five years, I mean, that's. If you get maintenance correctly on it. So there's, you, I can't give you a straight answer, it's just that each piece of equipment would be separate.
Sure, but just in in the same conversation we're having with the presentation and what Mr. Roscoe shared. Um, I just wanted to hear what Conacti, what what if, um, you weren't able to get those grants? What would you say the condition of your your water system at Conacti County would be?
Well, I would hope it'd be still in good condition and just our rates would be higher.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you for your, Mr. Council. Any other comments here in the chamber?
What would be the cost to the city to buy up Conacti Water?
So those are two separate entities. Conacti is a county special district, uh, Golden State is an investor. I think, I don't think we have estimates on what it would cost to buy up Golden State. But.
What would you like in doing is to buy each of our, just take over the nonprofits?
I think we're looking at all our options right now, yes.
But nothing is a stone? I mean, you have a.
No, there's been no offers made at this point. Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
Yeah, I noticed from the uh, the rate comparison that was up there.
Can you introduce yourself, sir?
Oh, Darren McCosker. Um, D and R and M C C O S K D R. Um, I just noticed from the rate comparison that um, again, half of them were uh, groundwater. Systems, which are incredibly less expensive to operate than, you know, with Clear Lake. I'm a T five because of Clear Lake, because of the techno- technology it takes to make drinking water out of that water.
Where do you work, sir?
Sorry?
Where do you work?
I work for California Rural Water Association. I provide technical assistance to water agencies in Northern California. It's my territory. Um, I'm here as a citizen, so I'm not not here on official capacity. I did uh, work my first eleven years with Golden State Water. Um, and it is an investor on utility, and I just wanted to highlight the fact that when you put the rate comparison up. They don't charge anything for installing new water. So they have no impact fees. So they have to recover that cost in other ways. So, I mean, I've lived in Clear Lake for about forty, forty three years. And I'm always seeing comparisons on rates. And uh, you know, having worked for Golden State Water, it's kind of an unfair comparison. Because it's it's better for businesses, you know, there's positives and negatives to all the different mutual water companies. County Water Districts and investor on utilities. So it's uh, it's not always apples and oranges. It takes a very comprehensive comparison.
I'm sorry, I said, don't know. So just from your, that's why I want to know what you did and where you worked. And if you're not comfortable answering this question, just tell me in the in the line.
Sure.
But I'm curious, so if I wanted to build a new house on a vacant lot, uh, within Golden State Water District, um, area. What would that cost me for the meter and the connection to heaven? Ask him on that.
Mark, is it still free?
I'm not here on the company.
At one time it was free.
Man, I could say that here and things have changed.
Okay. Yeah, I live in Sacramento, you know, I'm not in Clear Lake anymore, but.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I still, I still follow, you know, the news and that's why.
Never mind. It would have hurt for me to ask you the next question.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom? Seeing Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
Thanks for clarifying that.
There are no comments on the Zoom.
Thank you. I'll bring you back to council on the other comments or questions before, uh, City Manager, you don't need any direction at the moment, correct? All right. Uh, thank you all, thank you for all those who answered our questions. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hildebrand and, uh, Mr. Roscoe for your presentations, really appreciate it.
Sir, good, good. I'm sorry to interrupt you again, if I give my card to-
If what?
One way?
Okay, beautiful. All right.
Just to get the presentation.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on to ninety-nine, uh, consideration of response to the twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four grand jury report on the city of Clear Lake Animal Shelter. Mr. Corrigan. Uh, I'm sorry, Chief, how's you?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, just now I'm going to briefly go over the, uh, grand jury report, the, uh, uh, our responses, our proposed responses to the findings and the recommendations. Um, late in, uh, or, I'm reading the job, July, they issued a, uh, grand jury report for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year, um, entitled City of Clear Lake Animal Shelter. Uh, so I'm going to go over the, uh, what their findings were and our response to their findings and the recommendations and our responses to those. Uh, and just for clarification for anyone that's listening, um, these findings and recommendations are related to the animal shelter, not, um, the animal control side and field enforcement, those types of things, it's just related to the, the animal shelter. Um, so the findings, uh, their first finding was the animal shelter is overcrowded and has more than forty, forty-five dogs housed there. Um, those responses, I agree with that. Um, finding two, the tenure contract at three hundred and seventy-five thousand per year has no provisions for an increase over time. Uh, we also agree with that. Um, finding three is that timely medical care is not always provided. Uh, we disagree with that. Um, the city and North Bay are committed to ensuring that all animals receive timely medical care. Uh, there are instances when animals dropped off, usually by the police department employees outside of their hours and have injuries, they may not be immediately recognized. Once North Bay staff can spot those injuries, they get proper medical care for those animals. Um, and it's the city and North Bay's priority to provide all animals with the care they require as promptly as possible. Uh, fourth finding is that there continues to be an overall lack of communication between North Bay and the community. So we agree with that. Um, finding five, that cleaning practices need improvement, we disagree with that. North Bay uses the recommendations of the UC Davis Veterinary School for cleaning practices. Finding six, that there is no set, set schedule for food deliveries and expired food is being fed to the dogs. Partially agree with that. Uh, City of Clear Lake and North Bay, um, agree that there are no scheduled, um, deliveries for food. Uh, that is due to the fact that deliveries are determined by the needs of the shelter, which changes due to the population. Um, obviously, the amount of food, um, they have, as the shelter is full or overfull, they'll need more food versus when it gets down to lower numbers, they don't need very much food. If they buy too much, then the food will end up being expired and not being used. Um, additionally, uh, North Bay gets the food from a local feed store to ensure that it's, um, get quickly and timely and quality food. Recommendations, that the city of Clear Lake limit the population to forty to forty-five dogs at this time. Um, that has been implemented. The city of Clear Lake, um, and North Bay recognize the importance of maintaining a population of fewer than those numbers. Obviously, the lower, better. Um, and while we strive to hit this target, the population can fluctuate due to various factors beyond uh, the city's control, such as responses to calls, mandatory seizure of vicious or injured animals, pregnant animals giving birth along the shelter, uh, boarding cases, uh, which can involve an unknown number of animals, sometimes very high number. Um, and these unpredictable circumstances may challenge to add a, add a, accurately, you know, forecast what the shelter population is going to be. Next one here, recommendation two, that the Clear Lake City Council review the contract with North Bay Animal Services annually. This has been implemented. The contract between the city of Clear Lake and North Bay requires providing annual report regarding the provisions of services under the contract. This provides the city council the opportunity to ask questions and review the performance of North Bay. Um, the city and North Bay are fully committed to maintaining a strong and transparent relationship. Apparently, North Bay submits monthly reports to the city council, providing regular updates on operations, uh, including adherence to contract terms. If either party feels a review is necessary, it can be requested at any time by the city council or North Bay. And the existing tenure contract offers a stable foundation for both the community and North Bay to address evolving issues. Recommendation three, um, that the Clear Lake City Council exercises regular oversight of North Bay to ensure that timely medical care is provided. Um, this has been implemented. The city and North Bay agree that health and wellbeing of animals in the care of North Bay is paramount. The city monthly, the city council's monthly reports offer valuable insights, um, confirming that medical care and health standards are being met properly. Um, this process combined with routine inspections and open communication between North Bay and the city council and the police department, uh, strengthened by new quarterly updates that will be shared with staff in the council, ensure that any issues are swiftly addressed. Um, these, these new updates, they'll include some more medical things regarding cost things, treatment of animals, different things that uh, we haven't been typically reporting every month. Then just want to mention that, um, North Bay, um, and the city strive to do, you know, get medical care timely. Um, it's also important to recognize that Lake County, much like the rest of the nation, has a pretty big shortage of veterinary services. Um, North Bay does work closely with local providers, um, depending on their availability, and then also uses vets in the San Antonio County to supplement the limited resources we have in Lake County regarding veterinary services. Uh, recommendation four, that the city council ensure that North Bay improve communications with the public. Um, this has not yet been fully implemented, uh, will be implemented in the future. There are improvements being made. Um, the city and North Bay both recognize that effective communication with public is crucial to the shelter's success. Um, to strengthen this connection, North Bay has begun implementing a comprehensive communication plan that includes regular updates, increased transparency, and an accessible website to ensure information is readily available and understood by the public. Um, North Bay is consistently sharing information through multiple channels, including social media, their website. Um, and they're, um, committed to continually trying to improve these efforts with new, new techniques. Some of them including the increased transparency reports that we'll be doing quarterly to the city council. Recommendation five, that the Clear Lake City Council ensure that North Bay comply with the terms of the contract regarding the University of California at Davis Veterinary School's recommendation for cleanliness. This recommendation has been implemented. Uh, Clear Lake Police Department conducts inspections of the animal, animal shelter and a review of the North Bay cleaning standards. Uh, North Bay is committed to maintaining, um, the high standards, um, in full compliance with the recommendations of UC Davis, um, as they are a crucial for preventing disease and ensuring a healthy environment for all, for all animals. And then lastly, recommendation six, that the city council support regular food deliveries through a local food distributor. Uh, this has been implemented. Um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, they source the food, typically source it from a local vendor, so they can get it quickly delivered and get high quality food from them. So again, these are the, uh, proposed responses, um, from, one of the responses, the R two would be for me and then the R one, or F one through F six from the, the city council. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Thank you, Chief. So how do you submit these? What's, what's the process with the grand jury? Is there any after we, we approve it? Is there any following process from then, or?
No, they, they just, uh, post a report, or reports, and post on the website once it's complete. They post the responses that they get on the website, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilman, Chris?
Yeah, uh, Chief, I think you mentioned, oh, I think, uh, North Bay's will be doing more regular reports. We got to hear a report directly from, uh, North Bay, from Mark.
We do, we did the annual report this spring, where Mark Aiden did his presentation on the annual stuff. Um, other than that, at this point, we haven't asked him to come do the more regular reports. Uh, like I mentioned, we plan on doing the quarterly one with some more, uh, detailed stuff. Uh, but this time, I don't think we've determined who's going to, going to make that report. The contract does, though, require you to do annual report.
Do you have this grand jury reported, I'd like to hear it directly from Mark. Prior to the annual report, which would be next spring?
Uh, yes, it was early this spring.
You're sure? I, I, I would really like to hear a report directly from him. Soon as I can. And have the opportunity to ask any questions.
Is that required a contract amendment? If he's only required to come once a year?
I mean, we could talk with him and see, I don't- Sure, you can probably check something, figure it out.
Thank you.
He, he does have to supply the monthly reports, right?
Yes, he, uh, he gives this one's reports for the, the brief presentation that they've done here.
I, I do think that it could, from what I've seen, and I've always been directly involved in this issue, but our communication between North Bay and the general public, not just us, is, uh, wouldn't be a good idea to, uh, do a whole, their standings.
I agree.
Right, any other questions from council? Seeing no, open up to public comment. If you want to comment, please come forward.
Um, I just have a question regarding spay and neuter clinics, the possibility of that happening in the city of Clear Lake or, I guess maybe the county, but, um, spay and neuter clinics are, you know, I, I've actually got some kittens that were a surprise to me, and, um, it's extremely expensive, you know, to spay a cat, they gave you like five hundred dollar-
You have quite an order?
I'm sorry?
That's off the agenda, I know? Yes, we're on a report, uh, to the grand jury, not on a question of what we can get.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I just think it'd be a good idea, and it would be-
We don't want that, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, to, to speak more clearly, as far as finishing your sentence, if you trail off, then I'm like struggling to follow you. So that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the, the chamber? Seeing no, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the ZRMS compare.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to you.
I move that we approve the response by our least chief to the grand jury report of the Clear Lake, City of Clear Lake Animal Shelter.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Sulu and a second from Councilmember Kramer. Please open your board.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, moving on to the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh. So I wanted to, uh, highlight, just in case you missed it over the last few days, you've been having some problems with our sound system. Uh, we have, uh, put, uh, the wheels in progress to have, um, sound system replaced here, so, um, I think that work is scheduled in October, um, so hopefully it's not too far off, but, uh, apologies for that, we've been kind of trying to keep the thing tied together, it's obviously not working also, we'll be replacing that soon. Um, mentioned some, some grants earlier that topic came up, I just had on my list to the Sheriff of Council that we, um, finally got final, um, award notices from CPG Disaster Recovery Program for two grants that we applied for, um, some months ago. One is additional one point five million for our code enforcement activities, uh, which should fund our existing programs for another three years. And then the four hundred thousand dollars for technical assistance for, um, water consolidation efforts, so those were both approved. Um, and this is the same program through which, um, the county received nearly one million dollars for the LG Sonic program that, um, really is just a testament to Supervisor Swatier's, um, tenacity in making sure that there was a way to get that funded, so. Appreciate that. And then, um, as you know, we, uh, there's been, uh, work done for a number of years on the mixed income housing project near the hospital and, um, that's state owned property, and for a variety of reasons, they've had a difficult time getting that project funded, and so there has been extra money in the disaster recovery program, so they reorganized the pots of funding. Um, and this was one of the projects on their radar, they actually, um, wasn't through a competitive process, in fact, they allocated additional twenty-one point seven million, um, to that project, and so, uh, that developer is quite excited and being able to get really close to the finish line. There, um, there, there is a little bit of additional funding that will be needed to complete that, but having this funded in place is going to, um, make them score much higher, and they're, uh, pretty confident that they'll be able to get going, um, early next year on that.
Hi, go. Out here, um, could you just repeat that last part, I got distracted with the one that came up, the last random idea you were talking about, the twenty-one, right?
Well, I'm not sure what you didn't hear, but, um, so this is not the final piece of funding they need to start the charging, but, um, if the, the other fund that you're able to bring helps the scoring of other programs, so they've already applied for other funds through the state. Um, I sent them a letter, um, you know, because H D's large, and sent the other kind of division a letter, letting them know that they are going to get these other funds, and we should make them, um, score much higher, uh, and, and get the, the final piece of funding they need to, to afford. And they've already done a lot of design work and whatnot, um, so hopefully they'll be able to get that, that project going.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so a couple of things, um, I've had some questions from some of the individual councilmembers, um, and, uh, Merrick Claffey specifically asked about this the other day, so I wanted to provide some follow-up related to the Rite Aid that we have here in town, as you know, they fell for bankruptcy, um, sometime back, I don't remember the exact date now, it was, I don't know if it was the end of last year, but, um, and we, so we had obviously concerns about whether our stores are going to close here. They closed about twenty-five percent of their, uh, just over two thousand, uh, stores. Um, just earlier this week, they emerged from bankruptcy, um, though we operate as a private company, you know, a publicly traded one. Um, Rite Aid Corporate has assumed our local lease through twenty thirty-three, which is a good sign, and they, um, they said that while it's generally not a high prescription store, it is overall good performance of portfolio, and it is one of the, they call go forward stores, so, uh, there's no expectation that there's any risk to that store for this one show. Um, and then sort of two other water related, um, kind of updates, so, um, as you know, we're, we have three large road infrastructure projects underway, uh, right now. Um, and, you know, this is one of the challenges that we run into with, um, not being, uh, you know, essentially having control of utilities as well as, uh, that are constructed in the right way, as well as the road infrastructure, so, you know, there are a lot of aging pipes under those streets, and I just wanted to give kind of, uh, you know, this is not something we can get to a question answer session about, but just to share with the council, some has just come up, um, in, in large part of the last few days. Um, a couple of weeks ago, um, the, the first issues we ran into was with the old, what called Mall Park Project, South River Partners, Highland's District. Um, and there was, um, some, a number of pipes in very poor condition. They're planning on replacing a small, uh, amount of that pipe and essentially leaving the rest of it in the ground and, uh, you know- and, uh, you know, kind of praying that it was going to last the five years of our pavement cut or torrent. You know, which is a very frustrating situation to be in, because this is, you know, these are significant projects. This is, you know, certainly the, the last time, um, in my career here that any of these roads are, are going to be paved. Um, you know, there's going to be payments over the years, but this is our shot at it. Um, not being able to, uh, coordinate and have the infrastructure replaced that's necessary, not knowing when that's going to fail and cause us to dig up that street. Six years, yeah, according to our ordinance, um, the water district doesn't have to paint the whole street, but we still have, uh, what should be a very nice road with a trench down. So fortunately, the, the conversations with Highland staff have continued. It sounds like at this point, they are planning on, um, identifying the funding and replacing pipe on those streets, so that's, that's good. So there's, there's a small portion of that project that also has some connective water, Michigan infrastructure there. Um, no impacts to that that I'm aware of. The other two projects, including the largest one, mileage-wise, including Park, are on Golden State's, um, territory. So they've been doing a lot of work, I'm sure, using the construction, particularly tree streets. They've been replacing a lot of things, but there's a couple of issues, uh, on both of those projects that came up there. Um, are some, uh, abandoned pipes and tree streets in the street and are shallow. Um, the proposed engineered, um, treatment of the roads, what we, uh, refer to as FTR treatments, uh, pulled up the proclamation where they go in, grind everything up, mix it with cement, and then come back later and pave all the top, it's a very stable base. We have significant concerns about being able to grind that deep, um, and not continually running into abandoned pipe infrastructure. And then the, um, there's some sections up in the park where there's water mains that are as shallow as four inches under the existing surface. So per our franchise agreement with Golden State, um, it's their responsibility to, um, relocate those utilities out of the way, um, of our work. Um, but we did have a meeting with them today, talked through the things they're going to be working through, um, some issues. And we don't really know what the solution is. I mean, one, the easiest solution is for us to change our, um, engineered road section and not do an FTR treatment, do something shallower. Um, the problem with that is that turns what is a twenty to twenty-five-year project perhaps into a fifteen-year project. And again, this is the one time that we're going to be doing this when all of us are involved. And I don't think it's a good use of, of public funds for us to immediately pivot to that. So, um, we're going to be asking them, um, to figure out a way to resolve this at, at their cost per franchise. So, um, that's something there, um, at this time. And, uh, you know, we have, uh, we had a good meeting with Golden State and they're going to do what they can to figure this out. We'll keep the council updated as, as that goes forward. Uh, and then the final thing, um, that I wanted to share is you've all seen, uh, you know, hundreds of signs popping up around town and a lot of mail going out. And Highlands, per the court order, um, did notice new shareholder election. Unfortunately, uh, the, there's, there's a number of issues with, um, that being conducted per, um, the court's directions. And so, um, earlier today, we did, uh, file a lawsuit against Highlands Water, asking for the court to grant a temporary restraint in order to stay that election that's noticed for next week. Um, and additionally, asking the court to appoint, uh, what we would call a referee, um, to oversee and administer the shareholder election, um, in a way that's fair to all the shareholders in our community. So, um, there is a hearing, uh, tomorrow afternoon, um, at the courthouse in Lakeport regarding that request. So we'll, uh, keep you posted on that.
Thank you, city manager. Uh, Councilmember Pro.
Sir, just to go back, and I'm grateful that our public board structure is here. Um, how are we progressing on the road paving, uh, projects? Uh, is there any concern that we may not get to them before November or we might have to stop?
The only concern is of figuring out the, the water infrastructure, a way really right.
Can you give me a percentage of how this is completed and what's yet to come?
Uh, for Clear Lake.
Ballpark.
Oh, for Ballpark?
No, no, I'm sorry. Just a ballpark.
Um, for Clear Lake Park, they have paved about half the town so far.
Okay.
Um, Tree Streets has only been going for a couple of weeks now, so all they've gotten are some culverts. And, uh, Ballpark probably has about eighty percent of the curb we are done so far.
Thank you very much.
Couple more months.
You want to continue, Councilmember Pro?
Okay, I have not attended any, um, city-led meetings or, uh, or committees that I served on. And I did want to mention that we did host or hold a, uh, board meeting for the, uh, for the Chamber of Commerce. And our date for the, uh, luau at the creek is October fifth. And, uh, tickets are on sale now and we're looking for sponsors. It's always a good time and, uh, local fire danger troop will be there. And we're even talking about maybe bringing in some shade lights, you know, because that's always a favorite.
That's my way of saying. I really don't have any city meetings unless, unless councilman, so, uh, or councilmember Kramer.
Uh, I don't have any city-related meetings that I talk about. Um, I did, uh, we did host, uh, candidate forum for District One Supervisory Level Candidates, uh, a couple of weeks ago in Norlake. It went, uh, pretty well. And more importantly, um, uh, Lakewood News will be sponsoring a forum here for, for city council candidates on September sixteenth here in Council Chambers at six P M. That's on Monday and that's on a Wednesday.
Vice Mayor Oden.
My last meeting, because I was at a Wheels and Wheels Convention in Ramona, which, uh, went to, uh, a connection to, uh, Yellow County, so hopefully there's something there. Believe we're not, they think we can do something together to help keep our centers up here functioning, because again, we're back to the pre-pandemic funding, which means our center doesn't have funding. So just like, uh, we're, we're struggling and we're, we're going to have to work hard to get this done. Um, I, uh, will be going to the League of Cities Regional Meeting in Eureka on next week. And if you have any of you guys want to go, you can take a look at Norlake tomorrow. We're asking for confirmation on that. Um, and then related to going to any meetings either, because I've been really busy trying to get our center ready to move into. So we're having a yard sale tomorrow, Saturday till six o'clock, so I'll make it to where everybody can come and let's, let's gotta go. So anybody wants to come after Saturday, give me a call and, and whatever's left over is going to be a grab for grab. So, so hopefully we'll be getting that, uh, being moving back in by October, that's whatever, I'm sorry. Freezer, our freezers are working, semi, some problems that they're working, which is why we need to take a little bit of time to meet in, so that we make sure that they're working correctly. So that looks good, it looks like we're on the go. Uh, anxious to get back in there, so.
Open when?
Well, we're, we're hoping for the thirty-first of September, is what we're hoping, because that's the first, you know, day of the next, you know, before October, so.
Thank you. Um, I did want to note that the Clear Lake Animal Association, the SPCA of Lake County, the Don with Animal Rescue, uh, organization, is hosting a spay and neuter clinic potentially in February. So, I was going to record that anyway. Um, and, um, so great county here, uh, last week. Um, we have something even greater next weekend, and that's a soapbox derby. Cannot wait for this, I've learned that I'm not a great racer, but I'm not a great engineer either. My car's going to make. I just have to find a kid to race it. So if you haven't yet, you can still sign up, build your cars, they don't have to be glamorous or fast, but we want the community involved. This is a great event, it's great for the youth. Um, you saw the cars that are, are wonderful, police department built. Um, they are probably going to be pretty fast as well, so come bring your best.
Where is it at?
So that it's going to be, uh, on Dam Road by, by the college on Saturday morning, September fourteenth. And if you have any questions, just reach out to Tina and she can give you all the details. All right, that is it for me, any future agenda items? Seeing now, we are now adjourned to closed session. Thank you all for joining us today.